You're live.
Okay, so this is the July 7th meeting with Bristol Planning Commission. It is 7:04 and we'll call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is to review the agenda for additional removals, adjustments of any items. I don't have anything. I'm not sure if anybody else says anything you want to propose.
Hey Peggy, just for attendance, do you have everyone?
I do, thank you.
And we also have Amos Martin as a guest in the, as a, as a guest.
What was the last name?
Martin.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you for that. Okay, so we'll move on to item two administrative matters. So first item is, is to welcome John Moyers. John has recently signed on to the planning commission. Welcome aboard, John.
Thank you.
Next item is approval of minutes. There is some late discussion or there's a late issue, potential issue that we may not have complete minutes. And I think.
The type, they mentioned Lloyd Dyke, who obviously wasn't there at the May meeting.
So the header's correct, May 3rd. From what I can see, you go down and underneath 2C is.
Hang on, I'm gonna share these real quick, sorry.
Okay. Item 2C is actually from April's minutes.
And you get to the end and it says next meeting is May.
And I think everything past 2C is April's minutes potentially.
Really? Hmm, how did I do that?
So I, I'd like to entertain a motion to table the minutes and then Peggy, if you could review them and see.
Absolutely, sorry.
Our problem. It's a good thing we got alert people.
Yeah.
So an entertaining motion to table review or approving the minutes. Okay, Rob made a motion, anybody second?
I'll second that.
Shannon seconds, any discussion? Uh, John?
I'm gonna abstain since I wasn't part of that meeting.
Okay. There are no discussion, everybody that's in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, we have one extension, everybody else approves that action. The next item is zoning administrative report, you got any news for us?
Nothing super duper going on right now, it's pretty, I mean, busy but nothing crazy. No major subdivisions or anything going on at the moment.
Okay. We have questions for Chris. Okay. Move on to the next item, the next item is ARPA Funding Advisory Committee. Do you want to address that, Rob, or do you want to just roll that into the agenda item?
Probably should have adjusted that agenda item to roll into the full presentation further down.
Yep, okay, I'm fine with that. Item E miscellaneous correspondence, I think the only thing is, is the VPAC committee meeting, minute meetings which were attached. It's been a quiet month for that type of activity. And then we'll move on to the next item, discussion of open seats. We have two open seats, one's a year slot and one is a three-year slot. There is an individual that has stated interest and intent to fill the one-year slot. Actually, there's another individual that, based on some personal changes they're considering, may be interested in the three-year slot. So we do have some interest in those positions. Any discussion about that, comments?
One of the few towns that actually have a full, full board and actually people are potentially a full board.
Right, it said most of them are short.
Oh yeah, most towns are short on spread of the board.
This is, it's a full-time job. Okay, that takes care of administrative matters, let's go down to item three continuing business. We'll continue discussion on the bylaw modernization grant activity. We did receive a proposal from Madison County Regional Planning. I sent it out under separate cover, it's not in the packet preparations because it wasn't received in time. So I guess. I don't know if anybody has any immediate questions or we just start going down through it. There are a couple introductory comments that Adam made that are interesting. And actually, one of the comments we were sort of considering ourselves. So, um, this is, this is basically covering scope and, and there were, there was some chatter back and forth back channel to assure that everything's covered and I'm satisfied that he understands and is covering what we had in our scope. Not only within the grant, but the one that we attempted to go out for quotes with the pertinent stuff in that one. He talks in there a little bit, I think it's the second paragraph. A little bit about a couple activities that he felt important to highlight is one is we recently adopted development regs. So he had an interest in seeing what we had there and we sort of talked a little bit about if we're gonna end up making zoning changes and going to present zoning changes to the town for a vote that we should consider a little bit wider swath than just what the bylaw grant, excuse me, covers. The other one is, if you read in there, he has, he highlights previous discussion that this board has had about use of large buildings within the village. And that, that will remain a topic of discussion through our work on the grant, in my opinion. So just stop for a minute and see if anybody has any reaction to that paragraph.
I guess I have a question, he talks about, you know, what impact the change in the subdivision regulations has had? Do we have enough time and data to have a sense of that? Yeah, I mean, they, we've had the, at least two years. Okay. So, and we've had last year eight or 10 subdivisions and this year we've done three or four already. So it, it has definitely been a, a change.
Okay. Anybody else?
Has it made any kind of change in the demographics? A significant change, so are we still getting over?
Oh yeah.
I didn't want to consider myself on that group, but I am.
Okay, so then if you want to scroll down a little bit further, I think he talks a little bit about the contractual basis of what he's doing, which is pretty standard. And then he talks about the fact that he, he will use his staff, but he will be the lead person in our contact for the project and, and I know there's been some people that have been concerned about having a fresh look or an arm's length within the planning commission because we all know. So, so that's, that will be a fresh look as well. So is any, any further comment?
Not exactly on this letter, but I did notice in this week's Addison Independent that Virgens just passed a rewrite of their UDR dealing, if I understood it, with essentially the same issues. And having sort of the same disagreements maybe, but, but they passed them. Although somebody was vehemently opposed. But it was interesting to see and it might be curious to talk to them about what their process was and how they did it. They must have done it before the grant, because. I think, yeah, they've been, they've been working on this for a couple of years.
Yeah, I think, I think Middlebury just did something and Regent's has just done something.
Yeah.
That's in the work and then the other one that got grant money that seems it would be important to watch would be Heinsberg, although they're in, they're in a different league than we are for a variety of reasons. But it'd be interesting to see how they progress with their grants as well, but yeah, we should be, we should keep broad, broad, broad perspectives and open minds.
Moncton just rewrote theirs and did very little with housing. Starks World on their hand, they're working on theirs right now and they're heavily focused on housing. I think the Bridge Ends was also heavily focused on housing, if I understood the, from the article. And part of the driver first, or the biggest driver for Starks World, the fact that their school, their elementary school is on the chopping block. And has caused a panic in their town and has forced them to realize that 25 years of anti-growth sentiment created, has caused them to become a bedroom drive-through town. They've lost just about every business, there's nothing, and now they're in panic mode. They know that this won't fix the school issue, but at least it, it will allow them to look at their community for growth. So sometimes you need that really big issue to, to be the eye opener. Luckily here, you all saw it ahead of time, we need to try to figure out how to fix this.
Anything else? So I think, um, I'm, I'm not sure we need to entertain a motion for this, this is pretty much our only choice. We've narrowed, we've gone out a few different ways to get pricing. And the grant people are understanding and want us to document the process, but they are okay with the fact that we will be single sourcing with a regional planning. With that in mind, I'll get with Valerie and Adam and figure out. You know, Adam will prepare a contract and Valerie, Valerie, I assume, will do whatever magic to make it a binding contract. So thumbs up, thumbs down, yeah? Okay.
I suppose we don't have to vote till we actually have a contract, yeah, right?
Well, we could bring that to, back to the board if you would, if that's the desire. Yeah, probably should do. Onto the next item underneath three is interim activities to organize. There was some discussion in our last meeting and about observations from the zoning administrators select board.
You jumped past your, oh, nevermind, I bet. I thought it was the ARPA one, my bad.
So, I'm not sure, we have that open, I don't know if we've got any activity. And then there's always other perspectives, for instance, if Virgens regs still stuck to things, that, same way, burning, burning issues with. It's pretty loose at the moment, but it's okay. So that takes care of item three, item four, new business. There was an email, I sent out an email, there is a Vermont Community Development Association Housing Conference, June 28th. I did get some back, some response to the email, but I want to just have one more open, I wanna, or I don't want, or I don't want you to talk about it. So I plan on going and if that's adequate to get my biased perspective as to what conference is about, I'm certainly happy with that. And if anybody else wants to go, we just need to tell Valerie the head count.
I will not be in town.
I'd, I'd really like to go, I have a conflict, but I've actually been trying to work it out so I could go. So I haven't worked that out yet, but I'm hoping that by the 28th, I, I might be able to attend. I don't know, should I go ahead and register, I suppose?
There, there is a cost, the town will foot that cost. So I, you know, should be pretty sure if you're gonna do it or not, I would say.
Yeah, let me check and see if I can get out, I have an obligation that full day, but I might be able to move it, so.
Can you do that this week and then we can let Valerie know so that we can get, they call it tickets, but I mean, get passes or tickets or whatever. And if you want to just email back to me, that would be fine.
Alright, thanks.
Can you do it either way, actually?
Yes, I can confirm either way.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to go, but I don't know if I can do it that day, so I'm gonna have to check that.
So again, with a lot of that.
Yeah, I'll let you know.
Finalize this week and.
Sure.
We'll let Valerie know who's gonna attend. And anything else, anybody else on that one? Okay, so then the other new businesses discussion, the, the ARPA committee requested to do a presentation and Rob, as our representative, is very graciously going to do that presentation.
All right, Chris, do you have that slide to the PowerPoint or can you give me?
Just gave you, I just gave major co-host.
Perfect. Now bear with me.
I'm, I'm sorry, can I, will we back up just a bit, Rob?
Yep.
So the, the planning commission obviously operates underneath the town plan and is chock full of aspirational goals and policies and then there's some tactical implementation tasks for each section. And I consolidated just those action items. And they were distributed as part of the agenda. And it ended up being 12 pages, so it's not, it's not just one or two. And my intent was, as this board considers ARPA money, we should all be, so be considering our town plan and that doesn't need to be absolute binding, but nonetheless, that was the whole intent on sending out 12 pages of verbiage. So having said that, I'm, I'm sorry, Rob, go ahead.
No, that's, that's fine. Alright, so the ARPA committee that has been formed has been charged with gathering ideas that town has brought forward and presenting them to the select board in terms of what should be done with this money. So the ARPA money's been put out by the federal government in order to try to stimulate go, growth and recovery from COVID. And Bristol has received 1.1 million if funds to mitigate negative economic impacts of COVID or there's other criteria that may not seem directly related to COVID such as infrastructure improvements and things like that. So it's more broad than just directly COVID-related once you start digging into what sort of things qualify for fund use with this. And so the committee's trying to get ideas, our first task that we tackled was focus groups. So there were four that were done with municipal groups, one with business groups, one with education, youth-focused groups and one with nonprofits. And so those were all completed last month with some good results, I think. And now we're trying to figure out ways to gather ideas from other sections of the public and how to then put that all together and go through it eventually. So, um, one of the things that we've been asking is for people to start when we went through these focus groups with, you know, what they think about, when they think about Bristol and to try to spark that. I'm not gonna go through the full thing, just to be honest with you guys, but I do want to hear thoughts on what the challenges of Bristol are in relation to this, from your perspective. Anybody have anything they want to share?
So let's go around the table, so. John, do you have any immediate thoughts?
Housing, I think, is, is, I mean, I know you all see it, I, I certainly see it as a building owner and a landlord. The overwhelming demand for housing is not even close to being met. So that's a big thing, what resources would help overcome that challenge? I guess more housing, but that's a kind of a big answer, I don't know. So that's one thing, I mean, work is always good, but it seems like the local economy is really strong right now and people have the work they want and there's not enough workers to go around, really, so. Yeah. The, the biggest challenge has got to be housing right now, in my mind. I could probably come up with a few minor ongoing things, but that's gotta be, if you're asking the biggest.
Thank you, Jeff.
Well, I would agree with what John said about housing, I would say the answer is, you know, quickly is not more housing, but more diverse, more housing that fits different needs because I think the needs of Bristol now are different than they were 40 or 50 years ago. And so that, that's really what we're doing with the UDR rewrite, just trying to figure out what those needs are and, and how in terms of regulations you can fix things. But linked with housing and, and I think we see that there's ongoing work here in the, the bicycle pedestrian committee is transportation, walkability, moving around town, that's, that's one of the great advantages of Bristol. But there are some challenges now with traffic and streets without sidewalks. And so I think that's something that, so, and that fits in with the housing, to me. They're, they're very quickly connected.
Thanks, Shannon.
I'm a three-year-old John Jeff and add to that, that when you, when those two things together, then you have to think about, you know, jobs are good, but you, you know, if you don't have the house to live in, it's hard to get around and having a good job or having, or being, just to have one job is not always an option, so I'm not yet to have two of the jobs, some people do. Whenever he's lucky enough to have just that one, so I think all those things, you know, we start with the housing, it's kind of a kind of all is done.
Thanks.
A bigger picture.
You know, the only thing I would add is, I, I think there's, and I have mixed feelings about this, but there, there are infrastructure things that inhibit housing and as we go down through the bylaw exploration with town centers, I think it will become painfully obvious, some of them. So I think, you know, it's not only housing, but it's, it's sanitary disposal, it's the grid. As the demand is put on the grid for, and that's not a town issue or a local issue, that's a regional regional, could be New England, issue about how, how the grid accommodates distributed energy generation, that sort of thing. So I think, you know, it's, it's all folded into the, the whole dilemma of providing, you know, this, the housing, but there's some ancillaries there that have historically, or not necessarily historically, but will limit beyond just putting the house on the ground, so. Chris, do you have any comments?
Yeah, just following up on the infrastructure, one of the, it's, living in the village, we, we all have village water and that's an easy one to remember. But it, you don't get very far out, we're also, we don't have it, and that's really what the targeted next growth areas are. So expansion of the water system, the septic is, is big, but it's hard to get people to tie in and all that, but the, the bigger one is if you expand your water system out to Hewitt Road out along one, Moncton Road, where the next sort of visionary growth centers are, that might be something that could help. And I assume that would be a lot more money than the $1 million in ARPA funds. So, so, so in, in full disclosure, just, I, I should have said this before, I sit on this committee with Rob, so I have sat through a bunch of these. And I hadn't, and this is, I haven't talked water yet, it's the first time I've talked about it, I've talked about other projects. One of the things that, that we talk about in our group is actually leveraging this money correctly. And when, when we say that, is right now, when, for grant money, let's say a grant to upgrade the water system. Yeah, there's match money always involved. And right now, we're really limited on what we, what the select board feels comfortable putting out there for match money. It's like 10, $30,000 and everyone starts to get really nervous because we're adding to the budget. Here we have the opportunity to take a, a large chunk of money, you can take $100,000 and leverage that pretty healthy to do some of these projects, so that's the, that's the, one of the things that I felt has been a lot of fun.
Thanks, back to you, Rob.
Okay, so that's, we kind of touched on this in the, in the last question, but in terms of what to do with that money, it's been another question that we've been asking people is, you know, what, what's gonna help Bristol and what the limitations are and what you do with the money are, are kind of different questions. Are there any thoughts on what should be done with the money?
So, Jeff, what do you think?
Well, I mean, I don't know specifically, I think, you know, Chris has got a very good point that could use this money. Most of these, I mean, a $1 million sounds like a lot, but it actually isn't in terms of infrastructure. So you need to, if you're doing a big, you could, you could dribble it away on little things, but I think that would not be the most effective way. And I think it would be good to look for what's the, what are the big projects where it could be used to, to build on. And I don't, I'm not sure where those are, because I'm not an expert on the infrastructure. But I just, you know, driving through Middlebury today, on the street where I used to live, where water main grew twice a year. And now they're doing this huge water main reconstruction project and it's multi-millions of dollars. And I don't know if we have something like that, that we could look forward to saying, okay, here's something that's gonna wear out. We, we actually do, so one of the, one of the projects that I, again, I'll get on my soapbox that I pitched for on a number of meetings and in the public. I look at Pine Street as a great example, very similar concept, the, the water line is perpetually failing. As you drive down Pine Street, the reason why it's, it's all cut up and there's all sorts of patches and is every one of those patches was a failure in the water system.
Yeah.
And when they patch one, it's, the, the pressure behind it pops another one. So we dig that up and repair that, while we're doing that, we resurface the street. We also create either pedestrian and bike lanes or sidewalks, you actually re-scope the entire street. So, well, when you talk about big projects, that's one that comes to mind immediately. So the, it's one of my favorite ones. Yeah, I could see that, you know, and that's one of my soapboxes, walk down Pine Street and take a photo when there's two cars coming, one in each direction and people walking their dog on one side and somebody riding the bicycle on the other. And it just doesn't work, Pine Street doesn't work, and I didn't even know about the water park. So that's one of those multifaceted. Yeah. Which again, it's getting the most bang for your buck.
Right. Shannon, what do you think?
I, I don't know, I, I can't answer that question.
John?
Yeah, I mean, for a million bucks, I could come up with a few projects, I suppose. You know, I think we have a shovel-ready project for the downtown septic sewer system. And I don't remember, it's been a long time since I looked at that, but I remember something like a half a million or $600,000 cost back when, I'm sure it's gone up from, from there, but my understanding that would double the size of the. My understanding that would double the size of the. Of the sewer system that serves the downtown might encourage. More infill. More capacity would be a good thing downtown. If we want growth there, business growth, I think a number of. Businesses over the years have not settled downtown or. Because they don't have the sewer capacity to. You know. We don't have the sewer capacity to take it on, so that. If a million dollars would double the septic capacity downtown, that might be a good what, good expenditure. Another category for me would be, you know, I think there's a lot of money that comes to Bristol now for recreation. And that sort of thing, people coming into town as well as people living here enjoying what we have here. And so I always think about trails and. Ways of people moving around outside of traffic, basically trails, bike lanes, that kind of thing that. I know in other communities are important drivers of. Tourism as well as being, you know, beneficial to the people who live there. It sure would be nice to get from downtown to. To pass the twin bridges, you know, to Lincoln. Without touching a road, you know, that would for pedestrians and bikers, that would be. Quite an interesting thing, but. Yeah, I mean, I I don't know if anybody's ever looked at this. I don't know if there's any reason to be concerned, but we have this amazing. Water source for Bristol, you know, down on the bank of the river and. Crossing downtown and. You know, making sure that that's safe and secure would be a really big thing. If there's anything that needs to be done there, since we all use the water. You know, another thing I think about is people. You know, paying lower taxes, which is a good thing. And and I don't know what a million dollars worth of, say, solar investment gets you. Could you completely make the town, you know, have its own essentially free. You know, electricity, take that burden off taxpayers for twenty or thirty years, the life of the system. I don't know. I mean, there's might be interesting way to invest it that it comes back to us that way. And it's just hard to say. It's it's hard to make a list of priorities, I'm sure. Although I do like considering, you know, if I were, if I were the king of dispersing these funds, how would I do it? It's kind of a fun proposition, but.
Okay, thank you. So I guess my question is. Are there time limitations as to? When this money has to be spent?
Yes, there are. So the target is they need to be committed. By the end of twenty twenty four. I think it's December of twenty twenty four. I've also heard rumors of. Any projects in the ground by twenty, the end of twenty twenty five, but I that has not been confirmed. To me, so. That isn't as for big projects, that's obviously not a long. Timeline when you're talking sometimes up to a year permitting, depending on what the project.
So just to to jump back a little bit, Bill's joined us, so we have. Another. Commission member, board member. Bill, we're in the middle of Rob's presentation. He's presenting. As a delegate to the ARPA committee and. Picking our brains as to how we'd spend all that ARPA money.
Thank you very much. My apologies.
So you want to pick it back up, Rob?
Sure.
Okay, could I throw one other thing on the table before? This is another thing that I think is not on the radar, but since I live right downtown and I just see it, you know. I see the where the water runs off the buildings on the. On the south side of downtown, it comes off the south sides, drops to the ground and then. Several places it runs south towards the river and sort of down the bank and. That with the increase of global warming coming and all that and the, you know. Bigger batter rainstorms, bigger dumps of water. More frequently, it's become worrisome to me just as a resident. There's a self interest here. But I see, you know, the threat to the bank that is sort of the south edge of downtown because the water off all the buildings. Is not really handled. Properly at all. There's really no way it's being overwhelmed. Whatever systems are there are kind of failing and. And I just worry about that when I see what was done so well on the behind the other side of. Main Street and that huge parking lot. You know, that kind of treatment is probably in Bristol's future at some point, but. Again, I don't know if a million dollars goes that far, but there's a drainage issue that Bristol is gonna have to look at on the south side of Main Street.
Hey, thank you.
So as we were working through our our focus groups, obviously they were targeted like I talked about with those four groups. We were trying to. Pick everyone's brain if there was anyone else. Targeted audiences that we should be looking at. Just trying to get a. As broad of a spectrum of input as we could with this. So I don't know if anybody has any ideas. Like I said, we had talked to a municipal group of employees and. Also the. Youth and education based group and the nonprofit group as well as some of the businesses.
Shannon, you want to start this one?
No, I mean, you're putting this out to the public for their opinion also, so I feel like that you're already putting out to pretty much everybody.
Yep. That's the goal.
And the the other group they met with, one of the suggestions from one of the other focus groups was the. Student, the Mount Aide Student Council or. Where I don't know, some group of students got together and met with and they did a focus group with the students. So. They really thought getting the youth perspective on this would be a good one, so.
Jeff, have you got any?
No, another dad.
I don't, John?
Sorry, was, did you call me?
I'm so yes.
I missed what that was.
Well, the question is, is there anyone else in the community you are thinking should reach out for ideas about?
Well, it does seem like you put a pretty broad net out there and invited people in pretty well, so I don't. I can't think of one.
And Bill? You're muted, Bill.
He's coming.
Someone would like that to be a permanent condition.
You said it.
I did, I did. I don't think of anything I could add right now. Thank you. Thanks for asking.
Think everybody's. Gotten their input, but I'll give one. Final chance. We don't need to go around the table. If anybody has anything else they'd like to. Add, you can. Jump in here if anybody has any questions. About anything.
Are you gonna publish, Rob, the sort of a summary of the input you got?
Eventually, there will be a basically. Ice. In my mind, I see it as kind of a report. More established than just a short bullet list going to the. Going to the select board as being the output.
That is, our next step is is we'll do public outreach. We've got a whole bunch of. Method all methods there. Once we gather all the data. Establish criteria. And so and sort of score everything and then. Focus on those that rise to the top is is what seems the most important to. The community and then. Pass what we feel are our recommendations along to the select board for them to move forward in their side of the process.
It's a lot of work for a million bucks. Yeah, I mean, a million bucks is nothing to sneeze at, but. I'm impressed with the amount of work that's gone into it.
Hopefully, everybody is happy with the. Or at least the largest majority possible is happy with the how the use of it in the end. And it makes the biggest difference, I think, is what that seems to be the biggest consensus with. A a lot of these that I've noticed. I don't know if anybody else has has kind of. Taken that away as well, but it seems to be everybody's looking for. The the biggest impact possible.
It is, you know, it's interesting how. In my time. In Bristol, I almost thirty years or so of. Off and on in the last, I don't know, five or so years, how many young families there are in town? Lots of little kids around the village and elsewhere, and I love seeing that. I mean, to me, that looks great and. I I'm gonna be really curious to see what results you guys come up with and how those might be. I mean, we, I think we have a great kid community going here, you know, and that's like, feels like the future to me and. It'll be great to see what you guys come up with. I can't wait.
Anything else for Rob? Well, thanks, Rob. Got any closing comments or?
No, um. Well, it seems, you know, housing that everybody seemed to hit on has been one of the the top suggestions or. Everybody across the board has kind of identified that so far as being one of the biggest challenges. In Bristol. The other ones that seem. Come up quite a bit. Our childcare. And and things of that nature, which kind of correlate with housing. And and our and the aging population with. What's available for young families.
Great. May closing comments or?
Thank you for.
Well, thank you for designing.
Yes, thank you. So I didn't have to do it.
Not a problem.
So we're happy with that one. We'll move on to public comment. Having not hearing any, I'll take.
You just, you're just observing again. Awesome.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
What's into a journal?
Shannon? Motions and.
I don't want to second that at my first meeting.
I live dangerously, sure.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Do you have seconds? It's unlikely, but is there any discussion on that? No, everybody in favor say aye.
Aye.
While opposed. Extentions, okay. So I give you back thirteen minutes.
Awesome. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Bye.